I received a estimate from PID that is $2,400 for labor for setting the meter and putting a hot tap saddle on it. I went to multiple plumbers who are bonded, who are insured, and who have the, or can receive permission from the town. And in addition to that was a fee for the encroachment permit into the town that are considerably less than what PID wants to charge. In fact, they are so much less that I could put a cash bond for their amount and pay them for doing the work, including materials, and still be ahead of the $2,400. It just, it's, it seems like a really, really excessive for 12 feet of, and a meter box and a tap. I got prices from Gronniger as far as what the materials were, and it's, it's sky high. I understand you can't take action on it. I don't even know if we can discuss it, but we need to look at it because it's, if, if somebody's willing to bond to work, there's nothing in your water rates or in any of your schedules that said, that says that a private contractor can't go into it and bond to work. But $2,400 when there's no paving involved, it's excessive. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I guess you could have that put on...
Let's not discuss it.
Can you have it put onto an agenda item?
If he makes the request.
Okay. So if you make that request, John, you can do that. Okay. Does anybody else had something from the public that is not an agenda item this evening that they wanted to talk about? No? Okay. Then you will go on to new business.
Couldn't we do the old one first?
Do you want to?
Two A.
Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, get it out of the way.
Okay. We can get that out of the way.
I'd like to.
I would think that would be a proper thing to do with.
Okay.
I'm just starting to realize how we do things. The reason I asked for, I had to be off of the consent agenda is I had three calls today on that, and it is the stocking of the lake. And the center call asked me how we figured we could pay $4 a pound for fish for the kids to catch. And even though I've only attended one meeting of the lake committee and I'm really pleased with it and what we're doing up there, I said, "I'll find out." And so I called Kevin and got some information, and I knew there was going to be some people here that may not know any more about it than I did. But there's apparently $10,000 that's available for stocking the fish. This one that we're going to be hopefully approving this evening is $6,991. And that $10,000 is derived from fundraisers and canned fish or whatever it is, it's recyclable fish can. And I'll cite 12, and I got all this from Kevin, I did all any of it. In 2012, we planted $9,469 and 1 cent. $3,500 of that came from grants from various sources, and one of our grants is from the Bute County Fish and Game Commission, which monitors violations, fish and game bio violations, and then takes the money and splits it up during different organizations. And we have been in the past years, as I understand it, getting any place from $3,500 to $1,500. And I read in the paper earlier this year, we're going to be getting $1,500 from them for that. And then six of...
That'll be for next year.
Huh?
That'll be for next year.
For next year, yeah, for next year. And the rest of the $6,000 was raised by our employees. Our employees here, we have a great group of employees at this place, which I mentioned before, have fundraisers, they do all kinds of different things. And they're actually the one that organizes this event for our kids, which is on April 20th. And they raised in 2012 about $6,000. So the fish purchase was beyond that. And if you'll notice, I don't, you don't have it out there and it's not on the wall like it normally is, we're planning on buying 1,770 pounds of $3.95 per pound fish, and that's where that person was asking me, $4, for $6,900. And it's going to be, if, I'm going to make a motion for this, American Trout and Salmon Company, which is out of Oregon, and there's two, three reasons for that. In order to bring fish, any kind of livestock, and I've done that with domesticated livestock more than once, they have to be health inspected, and it's quite an extensive health inspection, even on fish. And the company that would be the second bid on this is the Calveras Trout Farms. They're estate, so they don't have to have any fish inspection, health inspection. So it's a real wise thing, even though they're a little lower than the others. I personally think to go with the American thing. So out of that, and you don't have it here, it's kind of an interesting thing, we're going to be buying 1,770 pounds of fish, and they're all two to four pounds. There's going to be additional, six of them put in that are eight pounds. And I found from the last meeting that we had on the lake committee that depending on the weather, only 20% of these fish will be caught by the kids. So what we've developed is a real fishery, and I've had people in the valley tell me about coming up here and fishing in our lake. We've developed a real fishery that people enjoy coming up here. Now, these fish are treploid, which means they're unable to reproduce, and that's part of a fish and game ruling. They only keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So we're going to have some eight to 10 pound fish in there that some of them catch, which draws people up here to fish, so I think it's a real great idea. I returned both, all three of my calls, and the middle guy that called me said, "Why are we going to be paying $4 a pound for kids to catch?" By the time I finished my tale, he said, "It's a great idea. Let's do it." So, Mr. Chairman, as it says here for us to do, I move that we approve staff to procure 1,770 pounds of trophy sized rainbow trout from the American Trout and Salmon Company for the annual stocking of the Paradise Lake at a total price of $6,991.50.
Second? Okay. Give me a second. Any more discussion? Any comment from the public on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All any nays?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. That passes four to one. And thank you Director Fletcher for pointing out all those great facts. We, I think everybody here enjoys Kids Fishing Day. If you've never been to it, it's a great event. The kids have a blast. What did we have in attendance last year? Probably, do you know George, offhand, how many people we had in attendance?
It's usually six to 800 kids.
Yeah.
Plus their families.
So, yeah. I want to say we were close to a couple thousand people. The year before, I worked the lake, Bill was there, and, and I went around and did food, and we wouldn't make it a quarter way around the lake before we ran out of food and had to circle back and get some more. So it was a great event. We raised a lot of money. There was a lot of donations from a lot of people out there, and there was bike giveaways and fishing rods and so forth, and there was all kinds of great stuff. A couple of guns where I think were raffled off. So if you've never been, please get up there. It will be April 20...
20th. April 20th.
20th?
20th, yeah.
20th, okay. I was thinking 21st.
And they drop, as I understand it, and Jim would know better than I, they dump the fish in a couple of weeks before the fishing day, and that gives them time to acclimate and swing around.
Yeah. Yes, Loretta?
I hope you will put up a poster or something to thank the employees and all for, for raising money. That's a pretty admirable thing.
Your donations are a good part of showing that too, up there. People show up and donate and buy raffle tickets. That's one of the best ways to show your appreciation because they work very hard at this all year long. So we appreciate all their hard work. The directors that have been up there appreciate all their hard work on it too. So, okay. That being done, new business. Item A, consider dual office holding by Director Kellogg of Director Paradise Irrigation District and Director at Bute County Resource Conservation District, which I'm going to refer to as RCD for the rest of the evening, and consistency with doctrine of incompatibility of offices. Probably be appropriate unless, Bill, you'd like to make a statement right off? You'd like to do something?
Yeah. I think everybody here has a copy of this, so I would like to thank you, all of my supporters here tonight, as well as those in the community who are unable to attend tonight. This meeting has been called concerning my seat on two boards, PID and Bute County Resource Conservation District, which has an advisory capacity only. Prior to my appointment, Supervisor Doug Teeter checked with the county council regarding the compatibility of the districts. They were found to be compatible at that time, before my appointment. These districts are compatible. On the proposed contract between PID and Bute County Resource Conservation District, the contract was proposed by the PID managers was done without the prior consent or approval of his board of directors. The only way this contract came to my attention is when it appeared in the Bute County Resource Conservation District agenda at the PID's manager's request. Please see the copy of the agenda on the backside of this, of the agenda item that I was given in Bute County Resource Conservation District. The initial contact started by telephone back in February 11th of this year, by George calling the Bute County Resource Conservation District manager. Had this been brought before this board, we could have discussed how we now have the experience and staff on our board to supervise the registered professional foresters there by saving PID money and using assets already at our disposal. We have no need to contract with Bute County Resource Conservation District at this time. This attempt to remove me has already resulted in unnecessary spending of the community's money. If this effort to remove me is rewarded, the community that I was elected to represent lose a valuable servant's goals, who are, who, goals are transparency, improved working conditions, improved service to our customers, and to ensure that our long-term investment and drought protection makes sense. All the PID members are here to serve the community. I want to keep my job, serving the people of Paradise, how you vote and speak clearly to the communities, to who is in charge of their district. I am proud of my service as a PID board member. These offices are compatible. Now, if you have any questions, either from the board or the audience, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Anybody from the public? Directors?
Well, I think we should understand...
I would like to hear from our legal counsel.
Want me to kind of set the stage a little bit?
Yes, please.
Well, as a preliminary matter, I've written a letter for the board's consideration outlining my opinion. At this point in time, it's privileged and confidential. The board at its option, if, if three or more directors agree, can waive that privilege and release it to the public, and I have no objection if, if the board wants to do that. But, but the reason we're here today is there's a, a doctrine, it's been around in California for over 100 years. It's called the doctrine of incompatibility of office. And basically what it means is each of the directors here are fiduciaries. And fiduciaries, what that means is they have a duty to the district that they have to, to perform to the utmost of their abilities. They have to treat the district better than they would treat themselves. And what happens is when you have, hold multiple public offices, there's a possibility that you can't treat the, both offices with the utmost good faith. And, and it's phrased as, some of the documents say conflict of interest. It's technically not a conflict of interest. What it is, it's a possibility of a conflict of loyalty. So, you know, a very simple example is if you had a director on two public agencies, and those public agencies wanted to, one public agency was selling a car, and the other public agency wanted to buy the car, and you have one common director. Obviously, the selling public agency would want the highest price, while the buying public agency would want the lowest price. So that director would be kind of in the irreconcilable position of arguing for a high price and a low price, and that would be considered an incompatibility. So maybe I should stop there and just see if the board has any interest in, in releasing my letter.
I move we waive the report's classification as privileged.
That's confidential to me?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Roll call vote on that, please. Georgiana?
Director Fletcher?
Yes.
Director Hadd?
Yes.
Director Kellogg?
Yes.
Director Duffin?
Yes.
President Corolla?
Yes.
So at this time, if you'd like to...
Want to get copies?
Georgiana has copies, public and...
And no way we could put it up there, huh?
It doesn't...
It's a rather lengthy document. Would you like to go to summarize your findings?
Sure. So...
I have.
Do you want it up on the board? I can go get a laptop.
I, I think it'd be a good idea.
I think it'd be a very good idea.
I'll just kind of give a summary.
Problem with that is, it's eight pages, isn't it?
Yeah. That way, that way, as he's summarizing, they can read it if they want to, if there aren't enough copies.
So I, I see a lot of faces that I also saw a couple meetings ago when we were dealing with a conflict of interest question with Director Corolla. And I said then, and I'll repeat it now, that I am not the judge and jury. So I can render an advisory opinion, but it's up to the judge and in some cases the jury to decide whether I'm right or wrong. And there's a saying that I'm very fond of, and I repeat quite often, that even reasonable people can disagree. And what that means, at least to me, is two people can disagree, and yet they could still be reasonable. Both of them can maintain reasonable positions. Just because you have a disagreement doesn't mean that one person's unreasonable and the other person's being reasonable. So with that said, it's my opinion that it's more likely than not that there's an incompatibility of office. And in the letter, I go to through quite a bit of detail on why I think that's the case. The key point is it's not, it doesn't have to be an actual conflict or an actual incompatibility. All you have to have is the possibility of an incompatibility. So you're, in some respects, all you have to do is imagine a situation where Director Kellogg would be put in a, in a situation where what may be best for one district may not be best for the other district. So, you know, you'll see in the letter, I kind of run through some of those possibilities that I think could come up. One of the examples that Director Kellogg mentioned was this contract idea. It's, it's not even just that. It's the, the two districts have a history of engaging in contracts, and the most recent was recently concluded last year regarding a study of our watershed and forest health. So also in the letter, there's a list of kind of options available to the district. It's not the universe of options. If you have other ideas, you could bring them up and we could discuss them. More than one option may be applicable. To, to run through some of the options that I wrote, I, I mentioned doing nothing, for example, kind of continuing with the status quo where there's a question of whether there's an incompatibility. Another option is to seek special legislation. The California legislature has the ability to make two offices compatible by, by legislation. Another possibility is to get an attorney general opinion, which attorney, the attorney general's office will occasionally issue advisory opinions if you give them facts. The problem with doing that is only certain people are allowed to ask for opinions, and unfortunately, I'm not one of those people. So we would have to get county council's office, for example, to agree to forward the request to the attorney, attorney general's office. And then there's also a possibility that the attorney general may refuse to, still refuse to give an opinion. There's a legal proceeding that's called quo ronto. It's a, basically a lawsuit that could be brought by a private party. The process is that a complaint is lodged with the attorney general's office. If the attorney general thinks there is enough of a case to merit it going forward, they will give you leave to sue. If the attorney general says, "Nope, you don't have a claim," then they'll shut you down right there, and you basically have no recourse. So if they give you leave to sue, then, then that just means your complaint is eligible for filing in the spirit court, which would be Bute County here, and it would proceed as a normal civil lawsuit. So that, anything else you want me to address?
Grand jury?
Grand jury is another option. You can ask the grand jury to render an opinion, do an investigation. One of the downsides is if the grand jury either agrees or disagrees that it's an incompatibility, it's, it's of no legal effect. It's, it's not binding.
So with all the publicity this has, if somebody had a grievance towards the district and we voted on something, they could challenge Director Kellogg's vote, saying his seat was vacated when he took the position at Bute RCD, and therefore that vote did not count.
I, um, let me answer that. I, but let me answer it first by saying something that I forgot. There, if there is an incompatibility, the effect of incompatibility is an automatic forfeiture, a vacature of the first office upon acceding to the second office. So in Director Kellogg's situation, if it was an incompatibility, the first office, PID, is deemed to be forfeited the second that he accepts the RCD position. So then Director Corolla's question is if that office is in effect vacated, what that, what does that do to Director Kellogg's votes? And in my letter, you'll see me discussing this. It's, it's towards the end. In fact, I could probably tell you the page. It's page seven. This, this is a possibility. It, it is a risk. I think, I've, I've kind of outlined two scenarios where I think it could pop up. One is in if the district ever initiated a condemnation action, we need four votes, a super majority, and if Director Kellogg's vote was effectively the fourth vote, then that would put the condemnation in jeopardy because one of the arguments that they could raise is that you didn't get the requisite super majority of votes. I think, as I, as I write in, in the letter, I think we could overcome that argument. I think we would ultimately win that argument. But the problem is, in a condemnation, you need the property right now. You know, you've, you've got a building project or a pipeline or something, something where you need the property, and time is of the essence. And if you had to stop in the context of a condemnation lawsuit and then litigate whether Director Kellogg's vote was valid or not, that's messed up your project. So that's, that's a possibility. I think it's, it's not a huge risk, and I think it's something we would ultimately win that argument, but there is some exposure there.
And the exposure would come about potentially anytime Director Kellogg is on the prevailing side of a vote, whether it's 3-0 or...
3-2?
3-2 or...
4-1?
No, 4-1 wouldn't.
Oh, no, because we would have had a...
Yeah. You would have had 3.
3-0, 3-1, and 3-2.
Right.
Yeah. So if Bill were to be on the prevailing side of the vote and somebody were to be dissatisfied with whatever function that we voted upon, they could express that dissatisfaction perhaps by, and this was my concern, I've talked to Dustin quite a lot about, about filing a suit against the district, which would put us into a position of having to defend the suit. And I was thinking that we, we should get this cleared up in advance of anything like that actually coming about. The other thing that you, you mentioned in your letter that you didn't bring forth now, and I'm sure Kevin, Kevin would have brought it up if he was here, is in regard to us going out for bonds in the future. If we're going to need to finance that dam up there in Magalia, and if we are going to be selling bonds, the, there's a requirement, I believe, that the in-house council provide an opinion to the bond people about the, the, any, any current problems that we have. And naturally, this would be an issue that would have to be disclosed to the issuers, issuers of the bond, that we potentially may have a problem because of Director Kellogg being in that seat with this cloud over it. It's, it's like a, not a clear title is where we are today. Dustin's, you know, final, final decision on it, you know, it's not, not a decision, it's an opinion, which Dustin is very careful to say. And that, that opinion, the only way for us to tell whether that opinion is right or wrong would be to go to court. If Bill were to resign today, we still wouldn't know whether that opinion was right or wrong. Bill would just be backing out perhaps to mitigate and, and not have a, a problem. If Bill stays around and we do nothing on the board, we may never find out whether it was right or wrong in this case, especially if nobody ever sues the district and we're not forced into doing it. If we have issues that come up where we're pushed up against a wall at some point, I, I'm looking for a solution that would allow us to determine now, either ask Bill to resign and, and move on, and we fill the, the seat by, by appointment, or go forth, present this into a quo ronto, warrento, and get the judge's determination. Because as you saw in, in this nine-page letter, there were cases cited, quotes cited, what the attorney general said, what the decisions were on these cases that, that support the ultimate opinion that Dustin brought forth. But like Dustin says, you know, an opposing attorney is going to have his own set of cases, maybe with a little bit different weight, a little bit different slant. And, and a judge is going to come along, I guess, and ultimately help further clarify the law by making a, a ruling in this particular case. But that's kind of where I am in saying, we've got, we've got problems here that could go all the way until Bill runs for reelection again in two years, assuming Bill's going to run for reelection in, in less than two years. And at that point, if we survive for two years with no lawsuits, then at that point, if Bill were to run for reelection and get reelected, then the tables are turned. Then basically, if we're still of the same opinion, then Bill would have vacated his office with the...
RCD.
RCD.
RCB.
And we would be the guys that are at least legal and safe and clean and move ahead with our, with our votes without any further concern.
The, my, the thing I'm worried about is that what happens if there's just three of us?
3-0?
No.
Takes all three votes to carry.
Well, no, and if one is Bill, then do we have a quorum?
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm, that's my concern. And like I said, Dustin is representing the district. He's not representing us directors or George. And so he's telling us what, what might hurt the district, and that's the way I look at it. And we have seen it where there have only been three people here.
Yeah. We had to be harmonious that day.
Yeah. And that was the day I can say no and stop everything.
And I think you did a couple times.
A couple times, yeah. Right. So that's my concern. Yeah, I, you know, I don't care which way it goes as long as we're doing what's best for the district.
I'd like to go back to how, how it all came about and get a comment from Supervisor Teeter, because we have another law firm that I've worked with in the past, like I have with Dustin this sort of time. I think it would be good to have Supervisor Teeter, because he was the one that appointed Bill and get some logic there.
Yeah. I, I think that's also good because I understand that you had communication with Doug and with the county lawyer, the county council. Yeah, I'm just asking, yeah, yeah. So Doug, if you would like to weigh in?
The one thing that I remember was when, when Bill went on there as a... The one thing that I remember was when Bill went on there as an advisor, we said, "No problem, because you don't vote."
Exactly.
But we said that there could be a problem if he started to vote, and then all once he's voting, which surprised me.
Chairman Directors, appreciate the opportunity to come here. You know, a lot of people have been saying what I've said, so I wanted to come in person and tell you directly. Yes, this was a concern of mine when Bill approached me, because he was really interested in the RCD. He's served on the Soil Conservation District and also on the RCD before, but not in the same capacity. The thing that I guess allowed me to appoint him was, I went to county council, and I said, "Hey, do you see a problem with this?" And he did not. You know, there's obviously difference of opinions, and the only way to go and find out the truth is to complete the... But I think, when you think of the law and the significant clash of duties, that's really the only one I think that applies here. And when you look at the general powers of the RCD district, everything's may. They may do this, they may do that. When you look at the Attorney General opinions that are published, it's about a supervisor on a water district board where they have to interact. There's a required interaction with the RCD. It's all may. They only can interact with another agency or a private landowner with their consent. So it's not like they have the power to force someone to do something, such as the supervisors can do, or your board with condemnation. Also in the code, "Lands included within the sphere of the RCD shall be general value for agriculture. Other lands, such as PID's lands, may be included." So I think there's just so many may's in their power, that what's in the Attorney General's opinions isn't relevant to the case at hand. So this would be, to me, completely new. The other thing, "No fee from the RCD shall exceed the cost reasonably borne by the district in providing the service." They're a nonprofit, so Bill can't try to, as an RCD member, go, "I want to make a profit on this PID." So that conflict of profiting isn't there. The other thing, 9408B, the last sentence, "It is the intent of the legislature to encourage districts to facilitate cooperation among agencies of government to address resource issues of local concern." I think if I was on your board, I would really think it's great that one of your directors is on the RCD. Even though the statutes are silent on whether it is a compatible office, I think if they relooked at this, they could find it that way, because there isn't this required interaction that the Attorney General has opined on. The, I mean, sorry if it causes trouble, but you know, I went on what my council, or my board's council, he's not my council.
Sure.
It's a recommendation. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate that.
Mr. President, may I say a couple things?
Yes, I wanted you to.
I appreciate that, Mr. Supervisor. I, just in the future, I mean, you directors know, you guys call me when you have questions. And I didn't get a call on this. And it would have been really easy, would have saved a lot of money, either you, Bill, or even county council's office, we know each other, would have called and said, "Hey, we've got this possibility, let's discuss it." So, you know, I don't want to criticize anybody, but just in the future, let's keep the lines of communication open, because I think that way it's going to be cheaper for everybody involved, if you can. The second observation is, you could see that the supervisor made very good points. And as I said, there's this phrase I'm fond of, that reasonable people can disagree. County council hasn't seen this letter, I'd encourage you to give it to them, and I could email it to them. I'd like to see their opinion, and I'd encourage you to ask them if they'd be willing to write an opinion that this board can consider. I don't claim to be infallible, and if there's a better argument, I'd be willing to consider it.
Plus, if somebody sues us, then we got some more ammunition.
Right.
Exactly.
Would I want to answer?
And one of the biggest questions that I had was, Director Kellogg, that you have had a lot of communication with staff on seven to 10 different issues in the past three months of inquiring about cost overruns, or what the actual budget was, and labor, and employees, and a lot of different things there. You've had communication with Dustin on three events that I can think about in the past three months that were pretty substantial things. But yet, the question that came to mind was, why no communication with district staff or district council on this issue? On the supervisor's side, they aren't going to be the ones that can be found, what do I want to phrase this?
They don't lose a director.
They don't lose a director, and they can't be held accountable. Only we can be held accountable if we let this go status quo the way that it is, right? They have no, no one can bring a suit against them, that those decision on their board.
Because the remedy is that the earlier office is...
This is the one that's vacated, exactly.
So no matter what happens, RCD keeps their director.
So I would like Director Kellogg to address why there was no communication with staff when clearly you've had multiple conversations with staff on multiple issues, as well as multiple issues and conversations with the district attorney on issues, but yet this one thing, which involves you, all these other issues involve somebody else, there's no communication, and that...
Well, you want me to answer some of it?
Yeah, very much, yes.
I've never talked to the district attorney about anything, for one. For two, there's only one contract that's ever been put between Butte County Resource Conservation District and PID. One contract, Dustin, not contracts, which you said when you made your presentation. County council communications. How many times did I call you, and at least twice, I told you about county council on the telephone?
After George's memo came out.
Yes, because I was completely surprised about George's memo. Why didn't George ask me about it? All I got was a memo.
My, all my point is, if the board is going to accept, if any member of the board is going to accept another public office position...
I passed out cards to Larry and somebody else on the board, and before George sent us the memo, and, or sent the memo out, I was caught flat-footed. I couldn't understand why the memo came out. And George didn't ask me. None of the other board members asked me when the memo came out. Of course, they can't, because we can't talk to each other. So George can talk to everybody, and you can talk to everybody, Dustin, but I can't talk to everybody. But basically, the communication, I told you after the memo, because I had no idea before. I passed out cards, thought, oh, everything's okay, and here comes this memo, which George didn't even talk to you about it, did he?
He did the, I knew about it, what, the day before? I knew it was coming.
Okay, and the memo acted like he hadn't talked to any council at all. So we went and talked to the county council, I did, the following Monday, sat in his office, gave him George's memo, and he said, "I'll get back to you the middle of the week." In the middle of the week, I was called to Doug Teeter's office, and the county council was there. Now, here comes the nice thing. County council tells me, "You're to keep a client privileged. I will not write a report on an opinion, period. Doesn't matter who it is, in the county wants it. That's the way I run my office." So there was not going to be any kind of opinion given by the county council on a piece of paper. And I remember telling Dustin this over the phone, because he was concerned, "Why doesn't county council talk to me?" And I said, "They don't talk to anybody."
Just for clarification, this is after you've accepted the position, though?
Yes, because I had been charged with, this is when, after I was charged by George and his memo with this, you know, the offices are incompatible.
I don't think you were actually charged. The, you sent an email, if I recall the events, you sent an email to the district secretary informing her of, or informing the district that you had accepted this position, and so then at that point, George is obligated to do something. At that point, I'm sure he conferred with Dustin, or at some point soon after that.
Why aren't you asking why he didn't confer with me? Why didn't he pick up the phone and ask me?
This goes back to my question, Bill. Before accepting a position with the supervisor on the Butte RCD, why was no contact made with district staff or district council?
Because the county council said there was no conflict. So why was the point of me talking to our own council about it? I already had what I needed to take the position. The county council, who advises fair boards, and everything, small, independent, special districts in the county. And when I heard that, then I thought, oh, okay, it's all right, no problem.
So once again, my point is, you have contacted district staff on different issues, and we could get them all out there if you want, and you have contacted district council, and you said you haven't contacted district council, but I'm pretty sure that you have contacted district council on at least three different issues that I can think of. This is all prior or during the time when you're accepting this position, and, but yet no mention of this at all.
I passed out, Larry remembers me giving out a business...
I thought it was your advisory thing. I didn't know you had taken...
Oh, okay, but I was on the...
Because I remember us telling you that you couldn't be voter on it. Don't you remember that?
No, because I got, that's why I asked Doug if he'd get county council to check it.
County council won't put it in writing. That makes me wonder.
But yet our council will put a conclusion in writing.
Right, if an attorney won't put it in writing...
One story the county council told me with Doug there, was that he had two organizations. One was a board of supervisors, and the other was a Butte County clerk, and they were fighting each other, and he was attorney to both of them. And he told both of them he was not giving them opinion, nor more than he's going to give anybody else an opinion. Eventually, they ended up both hiring their own attorneys. I don't know how it turned out, but the idea is that this county council will not do that. I appreciated his counsel on what I can or can't do in this situation tonight, but I had counsel. I had an approval from the county council, which is ignored in this report.
I don't think it's ignored, but since he will not put anything in writing, I don't think the validity, I think it goes on the premise of hearsay, because...
So, let's see, the county supervisor and I are just stretching a story.
No, I'm not saying that at all, Bill. I'm saying that you have counsel here on the board that you were residing on prior to taking this new appointment, correct? Is Dustin not an advisory counsel for you on the board that you were on prior to taking, accepting a new position? So, and this is what I would like to point out to the public, is that had Director Kellogg maybe made a phone call to Dustin, we could have answered this question for a couple hundred dollars. Now we're into it for what I imagine to be a couple of thousand dollars at this point. I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm there, but...
Okay, from my point of view, if George Barber had called me before putting out the memo, I could have told him about this and explained it to him.
I don't think, but I don't think it would have changed anything, Bill.
Because you'd already accepted the position.
Yeah, well, tell us, George, why you did bring it forth. I mean, see, George recognizes things that I wouldn't recognize, because I'm not all that savvy on the law, going back and forth. Certainly Dustin would, and, but you know, this is their job. They do it 100% of the time.
He has to protect the district.
And, you know, George has, I've discussed it with him, because when I got the information, I called George, and I said, "What's going on, and how did that happen?" And so if you wouldn't mind, George, would you repeat a little bit about your responsibilities to the district and why you brought it forward?
Sure. I have a job to do. I manage this district. I work for a board of directors, of five directors, all of you. I work for the district. When this, when I became aware of this, to me, it's straight out of the book, incompatible offices. It's straight out of the book. In my interpretation, it's not acceptable. So I wrote my memo. There was no reason to call you, because there was nothing you could have said. I wouldn't accept county council's advice, because I can only accept our council's advice. He works for the board. I wrote my memo, and from that point on, it was up to legal counsel. I've been accused regularly of, "This is a pushback because of your actions on my contract. That's a bunch of crap, and I take offense to whoever's done that." I have a job to do. If I wanted to play politics with this, I knew about it before my contract discussions. I could have blown this out before those even started. I could have brought it out the night of that meeting, and just totally derailed everything. But that's not my job. I don't play politics, but I have a job to do. I made my memo, sent it to the board, sent it to Dustin. If there was no validity to it, if Dustin would have known about some rule that disbars RCDs from being incompatible, he would have said, "No, it's not a problem," and he wouldn't have spent another dime on it. But it had merit. He had to evaluate it. That's why he had to write an opinion.
And that's what Dustin's job, Dustin's job here at the district, that's what he's here to do, protect the district.
Right.
That is the people of the district, that is the staff, the board, that's everything to do with the district, and this is why...
It's exactly as you said, President Corolla. If he could learn to at least communicate in a professional manner, email, whatever, it would have been solved much earlier. I think part of the problem we have is you think I work for you, but I don't. I work for five board members. You, you allow me to finish?
I'm not going to say anything, I was just going to laugh.
You wrote this, it's interesting that you wrote this commentary, and you are supposed to, you claimed that you can recuse yourself, so many issues between the two districts, but yet in writing, you're giving your opinion. The reason this board never heard about this proposed contract is because I called Kelly. I know they are short-staffed, I know they have things they need to do, and so there was no reason to proceed unless her board was willing to embark on this type of project. That's why this board hasn't seen it. Why should I even develop it until they're ready to move forward and say, "Yeah, we can commit the resources to that." That's why it went to them first, that's why you hadn't heard about it. So that's my take, but again...
Have we had more than one contract with Butte RCD?
No, just one.
The fire shed?
Multiple, I think a couple extensions were on that contract.
Yeah, it took forever to complete.
The thing I want to comment about is, one of our supervisors appointed me to the cemetery board, which they also did Bill also. When I was elected to the town council, the supervisor told me that I should, I was incompatible. And I didn't, I said, "Well, we're never going to do anything with, the cemetery's never going to do anything with the town. In fact, a special district, we don't even have to follow the town's rules," is the way I understood it. We could have our own police force.
Cemetery?
Yes, and everything. So we could have our own police force if we wanted to. So I said, "Oh, that's foolish," but he was right. And that was the supervisor who told me that being in the cemetery district was incompatible. That's what worries me. No, I know, but his, he talked to, he talked to council, which was probably a different council now, and they said that it was incompatible. But I'm just, I'm just saying that to show that nobody knows everything, and like you say, you can be reasonable and still be against somebody else who's reasonable. And I was just giving my thing, that the cemetery district was incompatible with the town, and so I think it's something that's very hard, hard to define, incompatibility.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Director's pleasure.
Speaking up, I've been sitting here listening, but on this compatibility, incompatibility, on this particular issue, I really don't feel that there is an incompatibility, and I've done a little work in the past with, not the one here in Butte County, over in Glen County, because Butte County just passed... Glen County, because Butte County just passed and accepted this not too many years ago. And it was the Old Soil Conservation Corps. Glen County has had one functioning for years. And I always wanted Butte County to do it when we, my family was a larger landholder because of the fact that we could do a lot of things that you're unable to do if you don't have that resource. So I believe, I really think, throw incompatibility out the door, and I realize we can't do that, these two groups are bored here, and the resources that the conservation district has, as Supervisor Teeter so well put, working together, we could enhance each other. Because they can only ca, charge anyone, including landowners. And that was the way that I had it before, what it costs to do the business. So you don't get in a negotiating situation and one person get a lot of money over the other, you just don't do that, you know? So you bring that, bring that into it. But I've also served, in fact, I just stepped down off of the Butte County Fair Board, and it's not because I'm on this fair board other than for the time commitment. And I've been on several other areas where we've used the general, Attorney General and county council, and when the county council gave us an opinion, that was the opinion we went by. We went by that. And I've never seen it struck down. It's just an opinion, Dustin. Okay.
Did he put it in writing? Did he put it in writing?
I know some things that we've had on the fair board, at Butte County Fair Board, he put it in writing. We've had a couple ADA issues, and he was our attorney. We had to use him, whether we wanted or not. And that was in writing, but I don't know about everything. But it was a verbal appointment because attorneys, I worked for attorneys on some different cases for expert witnessing, and they don't lie, do you? No. Because they'll wind up in jail. They won't wind up here looking at a bunch of nice people like us and, they'll wind up in jail. Is that not correct, Dustin?
I'm an officer of the court.
He's officer of the court, and his bar would be shut, and they, attorneys love to do that to each other, if one finds the other one lying. Is that not true, Dustin? Okay, now, so when Supervisor Teeter, he's new to the position as I'm new to this one, I would have taken county council advice and I wouldn't have questioned it. Because that's the way it's always been on this particular point. Georgiana, can you put number seven up there on, page number seven? Have you got, are you typing this whole thing? Put number seven up, page number seven. Okay, page number seven, Dustin, if you'll do this. While you're looking at that, number one, I'm assuming that's your first suggestion because it's number one. It must have been on the top of your mind.
These are in no order.
No order? Oh, I thought they were number one.
No.
Well, anyway.
Should have specified that.
For you, for you folks that may not know, Dustin, the district's attorney, he is a partner with one of the leading water law firms in the state and certainly in the North State. They, competent, you have 60 districts you work with or something like that. So his competency is beyond question. But now tomorrow morning, does Teeter have your, Supervisor Teeter, have your permission to call county council and say, hey, I just spent the evening up here being told you don't know what you're talking about?
Can I clarify? The reason county council won't write an opinion, he doesn't represent Bill. He doesn't represent me. He represents the board. So just to clarify all that, that is why. It's not because he wants to hide it, it's because he's not representing him, so.
Nor is he representing PID.
Whatever information I give him isn't going to cause him to make an opinion. So just wanted to make that clear.
I'm trying to encourage him to do that in writing because he has made an opinion. He just hasn't written it.
He just hasn't.
I am your probably more friendly county council.
Supervisor Teeter, I've not questioned your thing, but I know a couple other supervisors that I've worked with over the years, that, that he considers them on county issues, which this is, as far as you're concerned, he's representing them. In your opinion. In other words, Dustin would be representing us if we were asking his opinion on this very issue. He would be representing us.
County council.
If we followed his opinion, that'd be one thing.
Representing any party in this.
The district, though, that he's on, they would be.
RCD.
The RCD doesn't have a dog in this fight. It's, it's just the PID. It has nothing to do with the RCD.
Yeah, but what if he goes and runs for another office?
Because they're the only ones that can be in trouble.
Well, I wouldn't use that word, but.
If he runs in two years, then you guys are, then the district's going to be in trouble.
I don't know another word.
I don't like to use the word trouble. To me, it's, it's pretty clear that, that there's not a lot of work here. But I just want to clarify that probably the best communication the county council isn't through me as enemy here, it'd be having Dustin call.
And I did, actually, they called me.
I knew that.
They called me, George's memo came out on a Friday. They called me Monday early afternoon, which actually really surprised me because it was so quick. And I had barely even read George's memo, to be candid with you. So it was kind of a silly conversation. They, she wanted to tell me that she had done some preliminary research. It was her opinion that there was not an incompatibility. I said, okay, I'd love to see your work. And, oh, I can't, I can't do that. Our policy is to not reveal opinions. So that was kind of the end. I apologize because I haven't started researching the matter. I told her that the opinion would likely be confidential, but if it was, if the privilege was waived by the board, that I would send her a copy of it, and I intend to do that tomorrow. And that was the extent of the discussion.
Okay, can I continue on, Mr. President? The reason I asked for, the page number seven up there on the, and I was hoping, and I thought that it was his first thought on the thing, Dustin. And I'll read the first part of it, not that you can't, but while you're catching up with me. Do nothing is what Dustin put down in his opinion. The district does not have affirmative obligation to pursue this question before the Attorney General or the Superior Court, and we do not see a significant risk to the district in maintaining the status quo. Explain status quo, please.
Status quo, Bill retaining both options.
Okay, I'm going to repeat that again. We do not see a significant risk to the district maintaining the status quo. It is possible almost without remote, is that right?
Albeit.
Albeit, yes, but that means without remote, almost no remote. It's a, it's a remote chance.
Very remote.
It's a small chance. You'd have made more.
Guarantee that there's no risk, but.
Yeah, but it's a very small chance. That a person aggrieved by the decision of the PID board could raise the validity of Director Kellogg's position as a setting director, right? Okay. And then down here, we leave you such action would other maybe without merit if we went back up here on all this other stuff you're talking about. So in other words, you think that we could do nothing? George would still be doing his job, and the board would be okay by doing.
No, I can't guarantee that.
No, I know, it's your opinion, you know?
For assigning probabilities.
Probabilities, yes.
I think you're probably okay.
Okay, probably. See, I'm going to go back, and that wasn't done in closed doors, but we have a situation here the same as windows. There was no intent to do anything wrong, and we proved that. There was absolutely no intent of doing anything wrong. And I really believe that's the case here between Supervisor Teeter making his appointments to the county council, to the best of his knowledge and opinion, said there's no confliction, and Director Kellogg accepting it, you know? So.
Right, but Doug, nobody did anything wrong, but his company lost $1,500 in.
Only because he wanted to donate.
No, uh-uh. We could not pay him according to our attorney, and we couldn't give him the windows back. He graciously gave them to us to get us out of it, but he, but we had no recourse. So what I'm saying is, he did get hurt.
His company got hurt by $1,500.
But, and he didn't do anything wrong.
And it was not an intentional on anybody's.
And I don't think his is intentional.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not implying that Director Kellogg's, what he did was intentional, but I still have the question, and I don't think it's been answered, why no contact was made with district staff or district council on this issue prior to accepting this position?
Well, Sepp, I would say that, that Bill Kellogg did answer the question. I think that he felt comfortable with the county council's opinion, and just for whatever reason, didn't think that he needed to double check with ours and made his decision on that basis. And that's, that's about all Bill can say about it, and that's what he did say, so.
To answer Doug about attorneys not telling the truth, I was in court once, and this attorney told the judge that I was the worst person in the world, and I was taking advantage of this old man and everything like that, and told him, the judge, and it was all lies. And afterwards, I went out to the attorney, and he was a little guy. You know what I was thinking? And he said, don't worry, Larry, talk, ask your attorney, that's just lawyer talk. And he was lying like mad. And so I don't believe that lawyers always tell the truth.
Well, I believe that Dustin always tells the truth.
And I don't, I don't think there's any issue that PID and the Butte RCD can't work through. If we had a contract together, that's not where I think there could be a potential problem here. I think there could be a potential problem if somebody had a problem with a vote that the board did, and Bill was on the prevailing side, like Director Hunt said earlier. That's where I think the problem's going to arise. I do not think it's going to arise between Butte RCD and PID. I think we could probably work through problems, but I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dustin, that is probably where we risk more exposure than anything else, is because someone could take agreements to a decision that we made and say, Bill's seat's vacated, it was never proven, you just let it go status quo, so since you didn't spend the money on the Attorney General, Bill didn't, Bill didn't drop his seat like is stated in the 1099 rule, is that how it is, the 1099 rule? Then we at that point could be, I don't know if it's liable or whatever vote we made, whatever monies we spent, whatever we did that, that someone had an agreement to, could be a bad thing.
It's risk, and I can't tell you that it's not going to happen. It's, you, you guys need to assess, how much of a risk is this? Is it acceptable risk, do nothing? Or is it the type of risk where you should move forward and pursue some option? You know, so, so not only can I not guarantee that the argument won't be made, but if the argument is made, it's going to cost the district money. Because then I'm going to have to be, or some other attorney will have to argue that, no, this is appropriate. We have what's known as a facto or a de jure, a director, and despite the fact that there's an open question about whether the seat was vacated, they still have a de facto seat. And that's, I've probably bored the audience enough. That's another legal doctrine that, that would come into play that we would allege. But my point is, that would be an argument, and we would go to court and we would argue it, and going to court and arguing is very expensive.
So we looked at page seven, choice one. Let's go to page eight, choices two, three, and four, and five. Kind of give maybe a short summary of those, just one more time of what we will spend to answer this question so that we cannot be held liable.
What I mean by special legislation is legislation that is unique to Paradise Irrigation District and Butte County Resource Conservation District. This happens fairly often. A number of my clients have done it in the past. For example, I represent Rich Vale Irrigation District. They're, they change the way they vote in that district. Instead of a resident voting because it's primarily an ag district, they permit landowner voting. So that's an example. We went to the legislature, our member of the legislature, they agreed to carry it. My role would be probably drafting the language, and then maybe going to some committee hearings to try and push this, lobby this through the legislature. So that is an option. You could, you could also do general legislation, by the way. You could say, any irrigation district director can also be a director of any RCD. That would be the difference between special and general legislation. An Attorney General opinion, I cannot request an AG opinion.
That's number three, right? That's what we're talking about, number three now.
County council is one of the offices that can. So maybe we could persuade Bruce to, to ask that on our behalf. The cost would be putting together the package for the AG to consider communicating with Bruce, you know, helping him with some of the work, and then possibly discussing, actually probably likely discussing with the AG if, if they were going to render an opinion. The problem with this is Bruce may not agree to do the, to make the request. And even if Bruce, or we get somebody else to ask, the AG may say, no, we're not going to give you an opinion. But, but it's, you could do it. It's worth a try. The quoranto proceeding is, is the lawsuit is the only vehicle to determine whether somebody validly holds office.
Would you mind backing up just a little bit so the board is clear? If we did go to the Attorney General, ask for an opinion by whichever vehicle, the Attorney General said, yes, I'll give an opinion, the Attorney General, for, to cut to the chase of it, they support your position and say, this is an incompatible clash of office, then where are we? Does that mean that Bill vacates his seat, you know, leaves his seat immediately, or does he show up at the next board meeting?
No, it means we have a slightly more persuasive argument that, that it's an incompatibility.
Exactly.
It's still an advisory opinion, but you know, if I'm the low guy on the soda bowl, that's just above me. So, but, so that's the legal answer. The practical answer is, if the AG says it's an incompatibility, most of the time, the offending director will resign.
Because, because the offending director is going to have a, looks to see a real uphill battle in defending whatever quoranto action we would have to bring forth to forcibly remove them.
Right.
Okay. So it, it does, it just has more credibility then.
By the way, I'll jump a little bit. That same problem, problem that it's not self-effectuating applies to the grand jury. The grand jury, or its opinion, and it's just an opinion. You may weigh it differently than my opinion, you may not, I don't know, but that's also a problem with the grand jury. So back to quoranto, that is the only legal proceeding to challenge a person's qualifications for office. And you'll recall, we've talked about this before. We talked about this with Director Rick.
Paul.
Paul, thank you. And the process that was used under those circumstances was very similar. George asked that I write an opinion, I wrote the opinion, we discussed it, options were presented, and the board selected an option. So this process is very similar to what we did then. And again, the quoranto process is you put a package together for the AG's consideration. They consider it, they will write a brief opinion. It's, it's not an AG opinion. All it is, is it gives you either leave to sue, or they say you do not have leave to sue. And if you do not have leave, then that's it. The director keeps the seat, nothing, you have no recourse.
Now, also presumably, that would make, give the district a very valid defense against anybody else complaining after that fact that Bill was improperly seated.
Yes, I mean, the defense would be, we pursued that, and the AG decided there was no merit.
Okay, thank you.
If, if leave is granted to sue, then the next step is you file a complaint in spirit court, it would be in Butte County here, and you would litigate it just as you would a normal civil lawsuit. And there's the possibility of appeal for the losing party, and you could theoretically go up to the California Supreme Court.
How much would it cost to find out if the Attorney General would, would consent to the lawsuit? Just going that far?
Probably in the $10,000 to $15,000 range would be my guess.
Whoa, more so than getting an AG decision?
Yeah, because.
Opinion?
That's a fair point. So maybe it's not quite as much.
I was hoping it was going to be less than the other.
I was hoping so, too.
I'm guessing here, but it is a little bit more in-depth than getting an AG opinion because you need to prepare a complaint, you need to prepare a statement of facts. So you need to prepare these legal documents. So that's why I was.
Okay.
And I want to be conservative, too.
Well, could you, okay, if you did number three, and he declined, could you use the stuff that you got there to, to go further with him to see if it was lawsuit?
I don't follow. The AG declines to.
He declines to make an opinion. Could you still use that same information to ask him if you could sue?
I think, I think they have to give you an opinion. They have to give you leave, or they.
Oh, I thought you said he could say he didn't want to give an opinion.
Larry's saying, back up. Don't start the quo rinto where we go and present it to the AG. You, you first seek an Attorney General opinion only.
Oh.
Not to leave to proceed, but just the opinion. He's, he's wanting to know if that amount of investment...
Could be used for the number four?
Yeah, and, and then we'd get up done knocking on the door or we don't have anybody that will present it, a request or refute it. Have we wasted that money is what Larry wants to know.
No, no. I, I, I mean, the majority of the seeking an AG opinion, my estimate, that work has already been done. We would probably just give them this letter. And, you know, so that time is me talking with county council, me, uh, preparing any additional factual inquiries that the, the AG may have. So communicating with the AG's office, um, those types of things.
So how much, so you've spent part of the 5,000 already? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. And I, you know, I don't want you to be consumed by these numbers. That's, I, I don't...
Well, being an accountant, I'm consumed by it. It's, it's PID money and I hate to spend it.
You know, it may be substantially less. We may have unanticipated hurdles and it's substantially more. I, so I don't wanna guarantee that it's gonna be in this range. I think that's a fair estimate. Uh, that's kind of the best I can give you.
To get a little further clarification, I think something's been repeated, but this document that you put together here that we just approved for the public to see, most of that would go wherever we go from here on, right? This?
Yeah, so for example, if you wanted to seek an Attorney General opinion, you know, exhibit one of that would be this level.
But there would have to be other communications that would...
Yeah, they'd probably wanna see the agreement regarding the, the watershed study. Uh, they'd wanna see maybe some minutes, agendas, those type of things of both entities. So there, there may be some factual collection or discovery type of thing that we would need to, to put together for the AG.
Sup?
If I could have the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, Doug, yeah.
Maybe there's an option six and I don't...
I'm sure there is.
I don't know if vacancy filling procedures, but just suppose that Bill vacated his seat. How would you fill his seat?
It's by appointment.
By appointment?
Yes.
So he could be reappointed back to a seat. Then that would shift the problem of incompatibility office onto the RCD. And they can decide whether they wanna do all this or not or leave it alone because they're pretty much advisory only. Who's gonna really challenge a decision of their board? So...
We could reappoint Bill.
Yes, the process just, just roughly is there's a, a vacancy. So let's say a clear cut, a resignation, because that's a clear cut. The board would then adopt a notice of vacancy. It's posted in three conspicuous locations throughout the town, including Bill's division. And after the 15 days, you can then appoint, uh, whomever. It could be Bill again.
And if we don't, then it goes to the supervisor?
You have 60 days to appoint.
60, yeah.
And after you make the appointment, then you notify the county elections official and that seals the deal. They take oath of office, those types of things.
If Bill was not the person that was appointed, let's say it goes to the supervisors and they appoint somebody else, then Bill would still be eligible to run, 2015?
14. Isn't it 14?
15?
14.
You run in 14, yeah.
14.
14, is that when you're next?
It's when I run too.
No, I think it's you and me that run in 14. I think he's 15.
No, all three of you.
All three of us? Okay, all three of us. So in 14, then he could run again and be reelected, in which case then it shifts again.
Yeah, whatever the latest seat is.
Exactly, and it shifts back to, then RCD can decide what they wanna do with it.
And if ever, if it ever synced up to where the election and appointment was during the same year, then it turns on which oath you took first to determine which office wins first.
Well, I think two isn't viable because his term will be up by the time you can get two into it. So, so it's convenient between one, three, four, and five. Five doesn't look real good either and I don't like the cost of number four.
And, and I didn't wanna suggest that this is the universe of options. If, if somebody is creative and wants to think of something else, you know, we could discuss it.
For me, I need the district to be protected. That's the ultimate goal here is the district has to be protected in any decisions we make. Not just with Butte RCD. It's any decisions that we make, we need to be protected and this is at jeopardy right now. That's...
Well, I would, I would think that before, you know, when, when it first came up, I thought we should just bite the bullet and go in and get a, get an actual legal decision and then we're not guessing any longer. With whatever money we're spending, it's not gonna be wasted because it's gonna come down to a yes-no verdict and the judge is gonna give it. Um, these other ones, I was a little bit hesitant and didn't like them too much because they never had a, they didn't have a remedy. In regard to item number three though, the way that you've presented it and as the discussion has gone on further, I think that we should either do 3A or 3B and that is either get some, get, get, seek an opinion or just simply do the initial work, get it up to the AG's office and let them determine whether there's merit to, to pursue this in court. If we spend five or seven or $10,000 doing that and the AG says, either gives us an opinion and if we don't go that route, then they'll, they'll say yes or no, we can pursue it in a, in a court and with the quo rinto. Then at least we know that the AG has said it seems to be merit, go ahead with it. If the AG says, "Well, no, we're not, I'm not gonna let you go forward with this. It's a waste of taxpayers' time and money." Then we, we, we cut our losses there and we, we fold this in happily and we use that as our, our defense for whatever decisions we do in the future.
But the, the one quibble I have with what you said is if the AG says, "I'm not gonna render opinion."
Right.
That could be because they believe it doesn't have merit, as you say.
Uh huh.
Or it could be because we're just not the proper party requesting an AG.
Well, forget that avenue then because I want an answer and go, go do the first part of the sue and quorinto, quo rinto. Can you change that name? Get it out of Latin and make it English?
Section 803.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
Would we get somebody to go to the AG that might?
Remember, it's a two-step process. One, we need to get somebody that's entitled to ask.
Right.
County Council.
Right.
Two, the AG has to consent to give an opinion.
Right.
And the potential problem I see is the opinion has to relate to the requesting office.
Oh, and he's not...
Doesn't really relate to...
Because county council is...
So if county council said, "Hey, can I serve on the RCD as well as be a county council?"
Yeah.
Then I think, okay, that's a clear cut. Yeah, the AG's gotta do it, but county council asking, can...
This other guy.
Yeah, "I'm just doing this as a favor or courtesy for this district that happens to be in Hue County. Would you be willing to render an opinion?"
What about a supervisor couldn't do it?
Uh, a state legislature, legislator could.
Could do it, but not a supervisor?
I think I write them down. Uh...
Somebody low.
County Council, District Attorney, Sheriff.
Sheriff? Sheriff in the house?
That's, that's a worse party though, because that's even more separated from PID.
Yeah, that's weird. A sheriff.
How about the police chief? Paradise, a paradise.
And there's nobody in this room that can go ask the question.
Well, I can ask the question. I don't, I think they'll ignore me though.
You're right, yeah. They'll get their attention. So who, so who can be, who would be the best person? To get their attention. Yeah, but I don't think he's gonna do that.
No, so there is no, so there is no avenue to go that way, really. I think...
The opinion?
Right, the opinion. I think that the, the, the step that we would have...
Three would be go and see if he'll accept it as a, what is it?
Well, it's kind of like the first part of four. It's just the first little bit of tiny, less than $10,000 part of number four would be to present the case to the AG and see if he would let us pursue it in civil court.
You know, who, who can do that?
We do.
Any private party.
Anybody can, okay.
Private party is, is a...
Oh, you could do it, Larry?
I'm not gonna do it. I don't like lawyers. Sorry, Dustin.
I've gotten that.
He's not saying he doesn't like you.
I like you. I just don't like your profession.
No, I, private party is a, is a potential hiccup because PID is a public party.
So PID could do it?
No, I'm saying that's a potential argument. I, I've never seen that resolved and obviously you don't wanna be the test case.
No.
So what I would recommend is if the district wants to pursue quo rinto or at least the first phase, we do it in the district's name and also some individual name.
Somebody's individual.
So, for example, a director.
Bill? You wanna put your name on it?
Loretta, would you like to...
Oh, you could use my name. Cause I was the one that said I'd like to have the final decision anyhow.
I started a thing of, that's gonna cost money over something that was innocently done by Sep and by Bill. And, uh...
I did nothing in this instance.
And some, well, but George did catch your goof up. And, and they were goof up.
She's going back the old topic.
You know, do you really wanna spend money over something that's probably, it's ever happened before? Now that, that we know all rules, it ain't never gonna happen again.
That doesn't stop somebody.
But see, Loretta, it doesn't have to be a goof up. They weren't goof ups. It's just the way the law is written. That's why I don't like lawyers.
You see, that, that same law, Sep kind of violated it.
No, this is a totally, this is a totally different thing.
There was no report made on that one to us and, and so...
On Sep's matter?
Yeah. And so see...
There was quite an extensive report made on that issue.
Why didn't George get, why didn't you talk to George or George get to? Why didn't George get to?
We, we actually did have conversations.
We have to be fair. And I don't think you did anything wrong or terrible or rotten. I don't think you really did. But do you wanna spend all this money chasing? See, it is ridiculous.
If one person gets mad at us because of Bill's vote, it's gonna cost us a lot more money. You're right.
Mr. President?
By the way, I won that.
Loretta's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put words in your mouth.
Thank you.
Uh, she's, she, I think, the way I interpreted it, presented another option, which is, Bill, you could resign from the RCD. And I know that's not what you wanna do, but, and, and, well, let me give you the law school answer. The law school answer is if it's an incompatibility, you automatically forfeit it. So it doesn't matter if you vacate or resign from the later office.
Forfeit this office.
Forfeit PID. That's the law school answer. Practical answer is if you were to resign from the RCD, nobody's gonna pursue it. I mean, you'd be laughed out of court. The Attorney General would slam the door in my face. So I, I mean, it's just an idea.
In other words, if I heard you right with words in Loretta's, if, if he resigns from the RCD and remains on this board, the Attorney General, anybody else that wanted to take it to task would laugh at us and slam the door in our face, right?
I think so.
Okay.
And talk about, and talk about, I'd be the first one to say, "Guys, that's a waste of money. Why are we pursuing this?"
In other words, you, you, you would say board, Director Kellogg's seat on the board would be fine. In your opinion.
Yeah, in my opinion. I mean, I've given you the law school answer though.
Ah, law school answer, yes.
So if there's some young buck straight out of law school that wants to pursue that for whatever reason, I guess they could.
Ah, we'll twist his, his or her tail big time.
They'd be laughed, they'd be laughed...
We'll sic Loretta on her.
What happens to the, what happens to the fact that Bill's seat was theoretically vacated when he took the position on RCD? Even though he gave up RCD, the rule clearly states the opposite direction that the previous board was what?
That's, that's what I say. That's the law school answer. That's the academic law school answer.
Okay.
But the practical answer is, who would ever pursue that?
But if, if somebody came here and Bill was the deciding vote on an issue, they could, if they were mad about, uh, what was the one thing in person would, what's those fees?
We had a water bill where she wasn't happy.
What about the fees? What are those fees?
Capacity fees.
Capacity fees. There's a lot of people upset about capacity fees and what if Bill votes on it and he's the deciding vote? Then they could sue PID and say that the vote was no good.
I think we win that argument, even if Bill's the director of both entities.
Really?
I think I could win that argument. You know, I can't, I can't say it won't delay it and cost a lot of money, but, but you've made it even more concrete in my mind that, that we would win the argument because all we'd say is, "Where's the second office?"
See...
Where's the what?
Oh, you mean if he resigns.
He's resigned.
If he resigns from the other office.
I want us to get through this with the least expense to the district.
Right.
The least impact on Bill. I, I want you to take under advisement what Dustin said to you. If you have an issue, come see him first. Because this is the board that you're on. Not the board you might be on or the appointment you might take, but this is the board you're on. This is the one that needs to be contacted. Someone from this office should have been contacted, whether it been district staff or district council. That should have happened, okay? County Council aside, they're God in some people's eyes, not in my eyes because this is the place that we have to take care of. So, we don't want, I don't want anything bad against you, Bill, but this has to be resolved because I believe that somebody with all the publicity we're getting on this tonight, somebody could easily come in now and say, "Oh yeah, I remember. Bill's vote doesn't count, so I'm gonna take that to court." And that's where we get hung. Not RCD, but Paradise Irrigation District. We will be the party that gets hung on that. And nobody else.
You're gonna get in the worst trouble if you get rid of Bill. I'm gonna get Peter to appoint me to his seat.
That might, that might be an option.
Won't ever happen, Loretta.
Might after, after 60 days. That might be an option, but...
I have a question in regard to clarification.
Gonna run, Loretta, to get...
If, if, if Bill takes your advice and does what you just said and we go to go out for this $30 million in bond offerings or whatever we might do in the future, what kind, and if that happens within the next two years before Bill would run for reelection, what is your, then, legal opinion that you're gonna be giving to the bond issuing people?
This is, this is analogous to selling property. If, you know, I'm sure a lot of us in the room have sold property where you disclose everything, right? And you, you always err on the size, side of disclosing. You know, this pipe leaked in the early 90s and it hasn't leaked for 30 years, you know, those types of things. Um, so what I would probably do is disclose it. We had this issue on X date. In my opinion, it was resolved satisfactorily by Director resigning from the later seat. And that would be the end of the matter.
Yeah, and that would make sense to them probably.
Sure.
So, so we would still disclose it, but we would...
Right, okay, thank you.
It wouldn't be an open question. I would, I would shut that door.
Let me, let me, I was, I was kinda reading between the lines like you did on Loretta and maybe I wasn't perceiving it right, but isn't that what you were kinda thinking of on number one, what we brought up on the wall there for, something of that type? But I think you're in better shape now than you were then on your law school analogy where he drop off of that board. And if somebody wanted to sue us over a $10 water bill, how much would it cost them in legal fees?
A lot.
A lot of money.
Eleven or 12 dollars.
They'd be able, they'd be able to buy a lot of water.
Yeah, they'd have him. So, now if Bill resigned as a voting member off of the RCD, because I can understand why the RCD would like to have Bill on there because I've done some work in those particular areas. Bill, Supervisor, Director Kellogg is one of the leading agronomists, plant scientists in the North State. The things that CRD works with, so they'd have a true expert on there. And he went back as an alternate, non-voting, or associate, yeah. As a non-voting, there'd be no problem.
Yes, and the reason for that is it's incompatibility of office. And office means public office.
Yeah.
And when the associate director, they have, they don't take an oath, they don't vote. I don't think they go in closed session. Basically, for lack of a better word, they're a glorified member of the public. They get a little more speaking time, that type of thing. They, maybe they're a little more persuasive to the board because they're known, but that's it. So yeah, I think that would be, that would be okay.
And you'd put that opinion in writing, that drop off?
Then if he was an associate member, I, I actually...
Yeah, but I mean, before, before he...
You were an associate member.
You know, I'm not trying to put, I'm not trying to put...
Three years ago?
Director Kellogg has gotta do what he wants, but protecting us, in your opinion,
Yes.
that if he would drop off as a voting... that if he would drop off as a voting member of the RCD, his seat here on the PID would be safe, and you would feel comfortable that we can protect the district on anything that would arise from that, such as the bond issues or anything else?
Yeah, I think, and if he wanted to be an associate director, I don't think that's an incompatibility. Because it's not an office.
But you would be willing to put that opinion in writing for the records?
Does it need to be? Because it's on the record right now.
It's in the minutes.
Yeah, it's in the minutes. It'll be written down in the...
I want his five hundred dollar signature on the bottom of it.
Are you willing to pay for it?
Are you gonna pay five hundred?
Director Fleischer, I think we already know the answer to that, because Bill was on the PID and was an, uh, associate. Okay, I want to say advisory.
And my firm rendered an opinion, it wasn't...
Three years ago.
But it was okay.
First, I got this, the thing at the middle, when he became a voting member and if he drops off of that, then...
The voting member's the part that throws the monkey wrench in everything.
But if we follow our attorney's advice and opinion, then you feel we'll be all right.
I would say give all the credit to Loretta as a sixth option.
I want to comment now on this, if I can. The contract that happened between PID and Butte County Resource Conservation District on the watershed, neither district had any power over the other. The contract was written in such a way that PID turned them loose on it and to come back with a report. In other words, nobody was overseeing it. And the reason for the delays that it took three years is a couple of managers went out the door, and one of them eventually came in and he passed away six months later. And then Kelly came on board and she finished it up. The, there was no control that I think you could define as one district over the other. Now, the contract that George is proposing has those elements in it of control over one over another. Now, I didn't know, I looked at the bylaws today, and I saw nowhere where George could go out and actually speak for the board or attempt to build up a contract with another entity. And the contract is written in, or the suggestion of a contract, that's on the backside of that paper, is written in such a way that PID has control of the contract. Now, what I meant about George not talking to the board about this is between myself and Doug Fleischer, who Doug has taught forestry out of Butte College and out of PIC program. He's knowledgeable about all of this. Between the two of us, we could help the district hire a professional forester. The contract would not even be necessary with the Butte County RCD. There would be no conflict. The other contract's gone. Now Dustin points out in his own report in here, the only place where there can possibly be a contract and a conflict is on the watershed. Now, the watershed has the long-range plan, that was a major contribution to this district. It was a win-win contract for both sides. Okay, now, we, I'm saying basically, we don't need another contract with Butte County Resource Conservation District. Without another contract, as far as I can see, there's no incompatibility of offices. And even if there was a contract later, if they came as equal players to the same table, it would pass the compatibility test. Because I, what I did, and George is aware of it, when I saw that in the agenda, I wrote to Kelly, the manager of Butte County Resource Conservation District, and said, I'm gonna recluse myself, I hope I said that right.
Recuse.
Recuse, myself from, walk out of the room if necessary, at Butte County Resource Conservation District when this contract comes up. And I'm also, I sent an email to George and told him at the same time, and as far as I know, I did communicate with him, telling him I was on the board at that time, and said, I'm not, if it comes to PID, I'm gonna get up and leave the room. I won't be participating. And part of his argument in the memo is that reclusing doesn't work, or recluse, whatever you say it. And my argument is, why not?
Because Bill, what you're saying is, is that that's your opinion, but that's not what our legal opinion is.
I think he's mixing up conflict of interest with conflict of office.
I know.
There's a big difference between conflict of...
But it doesn't matter about the contracts at hand.
With Sep and his employer. Yours is a conflict of office. That's a big difference, big difference.
Don't say the conflict of office.
And barring any contracts with the RCD, it's not the RCD that I'm worried about. It is somebody from the public having a problem with a decision that you have made, or a vote that you have been involved in.
And that, and Dustin says it's very...
Everything's very unlikely, it's very unlikely, a jumbo jet can drop out and hit you in the head.
We vote on whether we want to roll, roll the dice.
Yeah, but...
I'm not gonna vote to roll the dice.
I cannot speak for anybody but myself. But Dustin is taking Loretta's number six and stating how he would feel and how he would back it. But to do that, Director Kellogg, and that's your decision on this, you would have to step down as a voting member of the RCD, but you could be an alternate member, and they would still have the full use of your expertise, which they desperately need, being the number one agronomist in the North State. But we would also be protected as far as Dustin's concerned. Is that true?
And, and you know,
Yes.
Director Kellogg, if, if you were really interested in pursuing the two offices, you could step down from the RCD during an interim period while you pursue individually special legislation, for example. I mean, nothing prevents you or any other citizen in this room from contacting the, your local legislator and, and trying to push through legislation that you think is beneficial.
What sort of catches my throat is you've written an opinion, Butte County, county council hasn't. And Doug has explained why, better than I did. And just because they haven't written an opinion and given it to you, you've totally ignored it, right?
No, I haven't ignored it, but how am I supposed to gauge their opinion? They wouldn't share the research, they wouldn't write it and put it in writing?
And you, so you ignore the opinion?
It's...
Just say yes.
Yeah, okay, well, uh, I mean, if, if you want to disagree with the merits of my opinion, I welcome it. I, I'd like you to disagree with it, because I think it's reasoned. I, I have no agenda here. My agenda is to protect the district. That's it. I don't have an agenda whether you're a member of the RCD or not. I, I frankly do not care, as long as the district is protected. That's my job. So this isn't a vendetta or anything like that.
For the benefit of the audience, I've been watching this since August and watching the board and Dustin. And that's very true. He just is strictly, his opinion is for the betterment of the district. And the last one that he gave us, thanks to Loretta, I thought was an outstanding one where, but there's certain things that gotta happen and toast, uh, I keep calling it toast, but it's gonna be, Director Kellogg, you're gonna have to make that decision. Dustin makes me not dislike lawyers as much as I used to.
Oh, that's progress.
Can I ask for about a ten minute break?
Director Duncan, I'm screwy, because I love these people out here and I love attorneys also. Those I work for, but I keep them honest.
I'm waiting for everybody.
Can I offer one more non-legal opinion?
Tell her no.
Mr. Kellogg, when you're already in a hole, stop digging.
Folks, Director Kellogg has requested a, a ten minute recess. And so, I'd like to grant that. At eight thirteen, we will reconvene at eight twenty-three.
That's a bother. Did I see it? That lady, she's of course had no business doing it. She did though.
But you won, didn't you?
I won.
All right, we're gonna reconvene at eight twenty-five. And at this point, I'd like to ask the public if they would like to speak. So, you have five minutes, clock is ticking. So, John, why don't you start and then we'll get you up there, Lauren?
First of all, I made a bunch of notes and I don't even wanna go into them. The, the job of an attorney that I've seen over many years is first, tell you right and wrong. The set, so you can make an educated decision on what you want to do. The second thing is to figure out what your liabilities are for whichever decision you make and what your potential exposure is. And the third is to defend you on whatever way you decide. What I'm seeing here is, the clock is ticking. We're, we're asking, talking about filing more paperwork and Attorney General's opinion. I was involved in a case that went to Attorney General's opinion on the Naples case, on the Southern Division MAP Act in Santa Barbara. And it took four years, five years. Uh, and it ended up that the California Supreme Court overturned the Attorney General's opinion. It, it, it isn't, all I see is you throw in a hundred thousand dollars or more at litigation, opinions, whatever, trying to find an answer, when you have far less exposure. As soon as Bill has to run for office again, this will become the second position and that's his first position. You wouldn't have an opinion in that time. And to, to ask the man to resign from that position, um, I don't know if it's right, but all I see is we're throwing good district money after a maybe that, God only knows how much. I, I know there was over a half million dollars worth of attorney fees in, uh, half of the Naples case. And we don't need to do that. We, we need to move forward, we need to, um, look at, look at the exposure. Uh, your bonds, chances of going to a bond sale within two years for the dam is slim. Uh, just move on, put, sorry Dustin, quit giving Dustin a bunch of money on it. And, uh, the liability is gonna be minimal. And if you get into litigation, you're gonna have every district around filing amicus briefs. And it's just gonna take Dustin more time to do it, and it's just gonna get too expensive.
George, would you like to?
As possible, we seek borrowings for the Process Water Recycle Project in the next two years, just so you're aware.
Exactly, because we're under a time constraint on that, so.
You guys are all smart and you got a clever attorney. I know he needs work, but keep him in-house, don't send him out to the wolves. You know, you're, you're all aboard. Bill is a very smart PID board member. Uh, you guys need to work together on this, quit attacking one another all the time. For heaven's sakes, knock it off. Say it.
Thank you, Loretta.
You goofed again.
I, I think I'd like to say that I, I don't think there's anybody on this board that wants to spend a ton of money on this. And if we can find a solution to the problem that brings us to a closure tonight, that costs us nothing more than what we've spent to this point, I, I think we're all happy with that. So, we're not trying to push Bill out. Are you sure about that?
This is probably my third or fourth meeting, and after the last meeting, I approached one of the directors here about your behavior towards Mr. Kellogg. Asked him to speak to you because I found it a tence. I said, I don't know what the situation is between Mr. Kellogg and Mr. Corolla, but something's going on and I'm sort of very apparent.
Well, I, at that point in time, there were some accusations against me, so at, at that point in time, I don't really think we can use that in reference.
I spoke to him quietly, so nobody else heard what I asked this...
No, the accusations were made in public and in the post, so...
No, they had nothing to do with that.
Well, that's, we're, we're off topic.
We're off, we're off topic here, so, yeah, so, Lauren, would, do you like to speak?
Thank you. I just feel, John said it eloquently, and I think, I really think, I can't see how this could ever get litigated in less than two years. I, you know, I, I personally, and I think most of the public here, maybe I don't speak for you, so I don't hold your hand up. But, um, I personally think you spanked him enough. If he just resigns from the one and, and you guys go on, I don't see no harm, no foul. We've done it before, that's the end of it. If he doesn't want to do it, then, then he doesn't want to do it. I know he's a man of principle. He's an honest man. I've known him a long time. He's, he's, he definitely didn't do anything on purpose to anybody. He seek counsel, that's about all the man can do. I mean, I, I, in the argument that you have for why he didn't ask him, it'd be the same reason why I wouldn't ask you, because you feed me water that I added a bedroom onto my house. I'd ask the town, and if they okayed it, I'd put the bedroom on my house. It really, if I didn't feel like it was in conflict with my other, with my other obligations, I wouldn't ask you. So, I, I understand totally why you didn't ask here. Maybe it would have been nice if you'd give him a courtesy call, I'll, I'll go there, but I don't see how he had an obligation to. So, thanks.
Thank you, Lauren. Anybody else in the public like to speak?
I hope you'll spend the money on buying a door that closes quietly and that darn sweet...
Loretta, that's, that's kind of off topic.
The, Director Kellogg, I'd like to ask you at this time, are you willing to step down from the Butte RCD council in an effort to solve this problem and bring it to an end? Um, and go into, if, if you can, and is it an...
Associate.
Associate position there? I know that a lot of people don't understand the whys to what Dustin's telling us, that this is a conflict not so much of, of, uh...
Interest.
Of interest, but of office. And somebody could bring and hold that against us and the theory that we might never go to litigation, there's a lot of theories out there. Those all get proven wrong when somebody does sue somebody. So, and people sue people every single day of the week, and they find the most idiotic, idiotic reasons to do so. So, I have nothing against Director Kellogg. I think this is the best solution to this problem that doesn't harm Bill really too much. I, it's, I, I don't want to see you leave the RCD. I don't think, I want to see you have to do that. But if it solves the problem here and retains good standing here, then I think it is the proper thing to do. So, and I think that the rest of the board would be in agreement, I would hope they would be in agreement, that this is the quickest way to the end of this road. So, at this time, I'd like to ask you, is, is that something that you're willing to do?
I, I just, Dustin, you spoke, said if I did this, there would be no problem anymore with my PID board job, right?
Yeah, I think so, because think about what somebody would have to say. You'd only be a director of PID, having resigned from the RCD. They'd have to then go to the court or whomever and say, even though he's only a director of PID, we still think he, he's not an office holder. And I just, I think they'd be laughed out of court.
And they'd have to spend an awful lot of their own money to pursue that issue.
Right, it'd be, so if that person came to my office, say I didn't represent PID, and that person came to my office, I wouldn't represent him. This, this person's a loon.
Wouldn't a private party have to also present this to the Attorney General's office and get the Attorney General's leave to pursue the quo, quo ranto?
Yep.
And that's where they're gonna get laughed out. I would presume the Attorney General's gonna say this is a waste of everybody's time.
Yep, that's likely.
So this solves the problem?
I think it does.
We all understand correctly, this solves the problem.
Okay, under this circumstances, I will resign my board position at Butte County Resource Conservation District. And I'll send him an email tomorrow to that effect. And that should take care of the problem, and I remain on the PID board.
Can you, Bill?
Doug, I'm, I'm sorry you're losing a, a board member. I, uh, hope that he can go on as an associate, because I, I also value Bill's opinion. Um, one of the reasons I joined the board was because of Bill Kellogg. My dad, I've known Bill for a lot of years, I know his sons, I know his daughter. It's all the people that I know out there, um, loving Bill. So, it's, it's nothing I want to see built, but the conflict has to be resolved here first and then everywhere else we can conjecture.
Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate your decision, um, on there, and I hope it works out for you too, Doug, as far as, uh, getting Bill back in advisory position, so.
I'd also like to thank Bill for, I know, his expertise is really needed in that area. And your expertise will be as good as an advisory as a voting member, Bill, and you know that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no.
I also believe that.
Do we need a motion in that effect? How we, no, we don't need a motion, okay. How we, no, we don't need a motion, okay. You're gonna write it up and sign it, right? Five hundred dollar signature.
It's in the minutes, it's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes, I realize that. So, at, boy. Get through the papers, they've got here. So, at this point, we will conclude item four A. I'd like to go on to Director's comments. Director Fleischer, I'm gonna start with you.
I'm glad that we were able to resolve this, and I was hoping in the future, in fact, I was talking to Director Hunt on this, that we could have a meeting sometime, it would have to be a public meeting, I realize, where they could really start working on some-
Harmony. Actual PID issues? But-
Harmony.
Harmony.
Harmony. You have to put it on the agenda.
The reason I say that, harmony.
Harmony training.
Harmony training, or whatever you wanna say. I've been at a number of those, I've been at a number of those, the boards I've been on, and schools that I've taught at, and these are a great group of people, and we have a staff second to none, I can assure you that, I've become quite acquainted with them, from the manager up or down, however you want to say that. And, but since I've been observing these meetings in August, there's always been a little contention, and we need to try to resolve that.
Not that we won't disagree with each other. We're always gonna disagree with each other, but for the benefit of the district, we come together. Now, that's more comments than I normally make, but I had to get them out tonight. Director Hunt?
Bill, I would like to say that I appreciate you taking this avenue of approach to help resolve the problem. It's the least cost for everybody involved, from my point of view anyhow. Money that the district would spend, money that you would spend, it may not give you the, the private satisfaction that you would've gained from that other, other division's seat while holding this one on, so. But I appreciate it, I think it's in the best interest of the district, and I look forward to moving ahead with that.
Director Duncan?
I just wanna say that my wife's always after me, she says that I treat district money like my own, and, and I'm, she says I'm tight, so, that's all I gotta say.
That's good for you and the public.
Right.
Director Kellogg?
My family has stuck with me all the way through on this thing, and supported me throughout. And my decision tonight was largely based on an email I got from one of my family members and asking me to resign. So, my family is the most important thing I have in my life, and pretty quick, I'm gonna be celebrating a fifty-year wedding anniversary, and this is really things. And I thank the people of Paradise, because I think you're really sort of an extended family. I've never had such support in any job I've ever had in my life, as you've turned out tonight, and I really appreciate it. And my family's here, two of my sons, one of my daughters, two grandchildren, and they've supported me right through it. My daughter, who had to go pick up one of my grandchildren because they were through running track tonight. So, that's the place where I'm at, and I really appreciate the support I have and everything that's gone on, and I'm, was it you, Loretta, that sparked this compromise as number six? You're not to blame, you're not gonna take credit for it, okay. But I, I thank you that we found a way out where I could stay on the board, didn't cost the board any money, and hopefully I'll still be able to serve the RCD. And been a long night, I've had ten days of wondering what the hell did I get myself into. It's over with now.
Thank you, Bill. I'd like, just like to say that I, I appreciate the public support of Director Kellogg. I've had support here on different issues, on things. I know it was kind of inferred that, that I don't like Director Kellogg, and that we might have bad blood or something, but that's, I don't think the case. I like Director Kellogg a lot, and I've known him for a long time, and I know he's an upstanding citizen, and I know he has nothing but the best interest of this district in his heart. As to the issue of harmony, I do believe that this board needs to get into a harmonious zone, and whether we agree or not, because that's not what we're here to do, is just agree with each other and nod our heads and, and, and be all on the same page all the time. We do need to stop pointing fingers and worrying about these little interpersonal relationships. We need to move forward with district business. I commented on this in two thousand and eleven, I commented about probably two or three times in two thousand and twelve, that there was a lot of unnecessary running around the tree, we weren't going forward, we were just running around in a circle. And I wanna see that, being president this year, I especially wanna see that go forward. So, I look forward to the rest of this year. I'm glad that we could find a solution to this problem without costing Director Kellogg his seat, without costing the district a ton of money. I will still ask again, though, in the future, any questionable thing that you have, please talk to staff or council, and that goes for all the directors. So, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight, I appreciate your input. We're here for you, that's simply it. We are here to serve you, and I think we all look forward and want to do that in the future. So, thank you again for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
And this meeting's adjourned.
Very good.